Thank you for the countless blessings that you bestow upon us. As we come together this evening, we seek your guidance in making decisions that will serve the best interest of our residents. We pray that your blessings upon all who live and work in our city are blessed. Amen.
I pledge a speech which wishes to apply on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let the minutes reflect that Commissioner Merritt is sick tonight and not in attendance. I would start off with the approval of the minutes of the July 9, 2025 Commission meeting. I have a motion to by Commissioner Murray, second by Commissioner Crimbor. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Crimbor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. Followed by the approval of the minutes of July 23, 2025 Caucus meeting, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Brayden, second by Commissioner Murray. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Crimbor?
Yes.
All right. Any guests signed up?
Do I have any, Jordan, any guests signed up on the sheet down there?
No guests were signed up, okay? All right, so moving on to...
New business.
Legislation.
New business.
Yeah.
There is no legislation.
There's no legislation. I was going to say, it didn't look like it. So unfinished business. So this is just a chance for me to comment on the fact that most of you are aware Wolf Road has been completed. And I want to give a big shout out to Kent County Fiscal Court Judge Nochman. You might recall that we received $650,000, $600,000 from the State Transportation Cabinet to fix Wolf Road. But that was several few years ago, so there was obviously an inflationary cost, and the county stepped up and picked up the additional cost for that road, fixing the road and then paving it all the way from Decorsey to Taylor Mill. So shout out to the county, and I think it was Rigler who paved that, I believe. Rigler paved it. They do a fine job. So I wanted to make sure everybody was available, aware that maybe you don't go up and down that road, but it's finally, finally, finally done. Okay, so new business. Brian?
So at the caucus meeting, I gave you guys some options for the purchase of a new flag to be placed at the corner of 16 and 37, 16. And I just needed to know how you wanted me to proceed. And I sent you a revised recommendation this, earlier today.
Explain to us your recommendation, please.
So I recommended buying the 50-foot...
Steel, metal?
Yeah, it's a metal, but it's not steel.
Aluminum?
Yeah. I don't have it in front of me like an idiot.
Here it is, right here. I got the whole package.
He brought it. Good bless you. Fiberglass. I knew it was something different. So the 50-foot fiberglass pole, two 8-by-12 flags. I went ahead and recommended that we have it electrically wired so that we don't have to use solar lights. And for that additional cost would bring it to a little over $16,300, I believe, so I'm just rounding up a request for $17,000 if you like the flag. And our guys will be doing the install.
And then what about the base for...
Right now, we don't have, nothing's included in that. This is only...
But eventually, we would like to do something.
We could have, yes.
Any other comments, Commissioner Carroll, Brayden, Commissioner Murray?
And this would be a budget amendment.
That's correct. This would have to be a budget amendment, right? The only comment I have is that I think it's long time due, and in behalf of the celebration of the 250th anniversary of the United States, it's nice to have a flag at the entryway of our business. In addition to that, so I think it's appropriate that we do that. I mean, a lot of other cities, Park Hills, Independence, that I've seen have similar flags representing their city at their entry of their city. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crimbor, second by Commissioner Brayden? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Crimbor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes. All right, administrative report, Brian.
Now, wait a minute. Can I go back a step?
Okay, sure.
Brian had put something out today, or yesterday, about Rumpkey. About Rumpkey. And I like to bring that up because we have a resident who has been very upset about Rumpkey starting at 6:00 in the morning rather than the contract time at 7:00 in the morning. And his email, Brian and I both numerous times about it, and very upset about it. And I would like to see us keep Rumpkey at their contracted time at 7:00 a.m. rather than waking people up in the neighborhood at 6:00 a.m. So I would, you know, I'd like to hear other people's opinions because, you know...
I wake up at 6:30, and my trash cans are emptied, and they don't, I don't wake up. I mean, I might be a heavy sleeper, and he's not, but they don't make enough noise to wake me up, and I wake up fairly easily. I mean, I don't know what the issue is, but is it everywhere, or are other people experiencing it? I mean, one person, I'd like to hear from more than one person if there's really something going on.
What I wouldn't, you know, I don't see an issue. Of course, I'm always up by the end anyway. But maybe we could approach Rumpkey, and maybe they could change their route around so that when they got to that street, it would be after 7:00. Otherwise, I'd like to see it, maybe they're allowed to do it until the 1st September, and then after September, they go back to 7:00 time.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be all year round.
Yeah, this was, they specifically, during the, when the heat wave came through, they came to all the cities and kind of asked for some waivers from that. And I don't think that any of them were turned down by any city, and I didn't turn them down either. That's...
Has there been anyone else that you've heard from?
I haven't. Christie, if you or Tanya had any complaints?
I mean, I understand changing it if it's affecting people, but if we have one person, I'm not dismissing that one person's not important, but to change their whole routing or change the whole system...
I don't think we're asking to change. I think we're asking to obey by the contract they signed. And we're here to serve our residents, not here to serve Rumpkey.
I understand that, but the same thing might happen in the wintertime, because if the snow's coming, maybe they'd go early, you know? I mean, there's, it's not like there's no rationale for it.
This is not something that has just popped up. This happens every year. I mean, during hot summer months, they'd like to start an hour early to get done an hour early. It's, like I said, I would approach them and see if there was any possible way that they could change their route for that one particular street, maybe put it later on in their schedule. But if not, then I'd say, I'm happy with the work in the system as it is now, but until the 1st September, then 1st September, go back to the contract.
The only thing I would say is, is I asked Brian, first thing I asked Brian when I saw the emails was, is if you had any other complaints on Manor? And I guess the answer was no. So, you know, it's like one of the other things, this is once a week. In his case, it's a Tuesday pickup, right?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
You know, so I, I just don't know that, the only way I could, the only way I could think of trying to accommodate him at all is to see if we can get the driver, and that's going to be complicated because the driver's probably new on different routes on different weeks. To skip Manor Drive until 7:00, but I don't think we should disrupt. Remember Covington and all the cities that Rumpkey picks up have the early pickup race, not to, you know, start earlier versus later. So we're asking them to change everything for one guy, and I'm not sure that's appropriate. But I do see your point, Mark, about the time. And I think we're almost to the point, what we got? He's probably got three more pickups in August before we probably get into September when it's a little cooler.
I mean, Brian and I hear from him constantly because he's upset about it, and he, his complaint is that they have automatic arms to pick up trash, and he's sitting in an air-conditioned truck. So why is the need to start an hour early when he's sitting in an air-conditioned truck and he's got arms picking the garbage cans up?
Well, that's not true, Mark. I mean...
This is what he's saying.
Well, I understand, Mark, but on my street, I think Recycle might have an arm, but the last few times I've watched them, the gentleman has gotten out and dumped it, you know?
There's, people have been stocking. If you drive down the street on trash day, they're filling their garbage cans overflowing right now. I don't know if they're doing a lot of removal of things and stuff, but they're packed. And they have, a lot of times, it'll dump when they're dumping it, and they have to get out and pick up the things. So they're not sitting in a air-conditioned thing the whole time. I think that's a little bit misleading.
Okay. Let's go back to one 20 years ago when they didn't have the arms, and every time the garbage truck went down the street, they had to get out and manually dump every garbage can. And, you know, I'll do whatever you want to. I don't hear the garbage pickup either because where I live, I'm secluded, and I don't hear it. I'm just doing what a resident is asking us to do. And he said, if you do change it around from, you know, to make it later on my street, then you're affecting another street, and why, you know? So I'm, I'm passing out along to you. He emailed Brian and I quite often, and I'm just doing what a resident is requesting of me.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just to point out, my garbage gets, on my street gets picked up at about 6:30. And then, or Recycling comes along about 8:30, for whatever reason. That's, so I mean, I don't even hear them. So I don't know what there's, there's no clanging anymore because the cans are plastic or...
Mine's all done before 6:30 every week.
Yeah, garbage cans, I could, I could see, but I don't know what the hydraulics noise would be. I don't know about that.
You know what? If that's what you all feel, it's fine. I'm just bringing up what he's requested from me to bring to the City Commission. I've done that. If you all don't want to do it, then that's, that's the decision's made.
That's up to, anybody else have a comment? To change it, or, yeah, I guess we'd have to have a vote, or do we have to have a vote to change it, or we'd have to have a vote to, or not vote if we keep it the same way? No vote? So that would be up to you to make a motion if you wanted to have a vote on it. If you don't want to have a vote on it, then...
You know what? It's, it's, it wouldn't, it would be, wouldn't go through, so I'm not going to even bring it up.
Okay. All right, okay. All right, Brian, anything else on the City of Nissrider side?
I have actually nothing additional.
Yeah. All right, City Treasurer, Tanya, what's it looking like?
Looks, okay.
Okay.
July's always a hard month to look at, as far as, you know, obviously, we haven't collected, yeah, we haven't collected any taxes for 2025, but overall, we're doing fine. I have nothing to add unless you guys have any questions.
I don't. I looked at your report. It just sort of looks good to me. All right, Sean, welcome back.
Thank you.
So what do you got for us, Sean?
Yeah, we'll go through, starting off with the Taylor Mill sidewalk phase three project. So I know the Right Away team's been out talking to some people along those trails. I met with them out there myself in early July. The, last we talked to with the team, they were thinking that the Right Away phase would be completed in November this year. I asked Right Away group to give me a status update and see where we're at. And as soon as I get it, I'll share with them. The Vincent Drive project, roadway and drainage improvements. We submitted 60% plans to SD1. We haven't received comments from SD1, but we're still looking to submit 90% plans to SD1 in September, late September. The 2025 street program, which is the work that Manor Drive, Lone Oak, Great, all the ones that the water company's been working on the past several months. We had a pre-construction meeting on July 29. Rigler is the contractor that'll be performing that work. And they're going to begin once the road work on Manor, or the water main work on Manor is complete. The water main installation along Lone Oak and all the streets back in that subdivision, that's complete. So they may start doing some maybe curb repairs and patching, but the paving will not start until after the water line's done on Manor. And the contract completion date's October 31st. So once they, the water company contractor moves out, Rigler will move in. So again, that was their intent, was to be a seamless project, even though it's two contracts under two different agencies essentially. So it's going smooth so far. The Locust Pike area water and sewer feasibility study, talked with the team the other day. They've been working, combing through all the information that we have received from Water District, Sewer District. As you imagine, that's a lot of information, a lot of modeling. They've been working on a few exhibits and coming up with some possible alignment or scenarios to where if we wanted to expand sewer service in that area, what it could look like. We're looking to have a stakeholder meeting, probably here in the next, I would say, three to four weeks. We're trying to schedule it now, but that will probably have, I don't know, maybe 15 people in attendance or so. So it'll be a pretty large group if there's so many people involved in this kind of study. So we'll try to get that scheduled here, I'd say, next few weeks. And the Mason Road Slip, that's a relatively newer project. It came about unfortunately. Geotechnology, I believe, was out there last week to do some of the boring, but then we get the chance to confirm with them that they're completed the geotechnical drillings. But once that is done, they'll be looking to begin on the pier walk with that. And that's all I have.
Sean, I have to apologize. I was distracted. What did you say about sidewalk project?
The Right Away is going to be, looks to be completed in November this year. So I'm asking the Right Away team to give me an update and make sure we're still on track. But early July, I think, is the last time we spoke, and that seemed to be the case.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess the follow-up from me is that the target for the Right Away completion on the sidewalk program is in November? So that really precludes any construction maybe for this year?
Probably not construction this year. We may be able to bid it before the end of the year. Once I get an update from the Right Away agent, what I can start doing is coordinating with the state to make sure that the agreements, that, because once we go to, to able to bid, we have to get another supplemental MOA with the state. So it's another, like, mother may I type of request, and it usually takes about three months to process that paperwork. But if we can get in front of it and try to push it as far as we can while the Right Away phase is closing out, basically, because that last month or so, all we're doing is waiting on the recordings to take place. The negotiations, everybody's already agreed to it, but all that has to be, you know, finalized.
Yeah. Not as experienced as you are, but it seems to me, since we already have two phases completed, and this is the third phase, I don't know why it would take three months to get that mother may I...
Yeah. It's, unfortunately, the LPA process, with many, I've worked in three state, LPA projects in three states, and they all give them phased authorizations. They don't, they used to, and this was when I first started my career, they would give you all the money upfront under one agreement. Then they didn't like that. Things happened to communities, and they said, no, we'll, we'll just give you bits and pieces as we see your approval along, in progress along the project. So it's, takes a little longer, but that's...
Is this a KYTC internal? In other words, internally, this is the way they handle that? And they're, they're probably understaffed down there, aren't they?
They are. And it, it's a statewide LPA process, so it's not nothing that District 6 is, is just being unique on. It's a statewide process.
So would District 6 have any influence on expediting that?
They can help, but still, they have to run everything through Central Office. All the agreements come out Central Office and Crimbor.
Okay, so Brian and I have an appointment to see the Jaeger on the 18th about some other issues.
Sure.
Is there any information you can provide us that we could prevent, present to Bob Jaeger?
I would say whatever we can do to help sort of grease the skids before we get to that point where we're done with Right Away, and then we're asking for the authorization. If we can ask it as we're wrapping up Right Away, so they can get started on that agreement. Sometimes Central Office takes...
You put that on the agenda.
A month just to draft their agreement.
Yeah. I just want to try to expedite, if I could, if we could help, if through District 6, obviously, we can't do anything except ask District 6.
Sure.
And I'm not afraid to ask, that's for sure.
And another thing you can do too, and I've seen it done both ways, is that the, the next supplemental MOA, sometimes it comes signed by the secretary.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's just, they wait for the, the LPA to sign it, then it goes back to the secretary, then it has to come back. So there's like an extra step. So if they can actually sign, partially execute the agreement before it's submitted, then all you guys, once you guys get it and sign it, then it's...
So Jim Gray actually has to sign it?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
All right. Thank you.
Dan, what other projects are you and Brian going to talk to Bob Jaeger about when you get them on the 18th?
Basically, I was asked at the last meeting of Vincent Drive, the overflow, that was one thing that we were, we were targeting. And what was the other thing?
Roundabout at Taylor Creek.
Oh. This is a futuristic request because of the traffic situation on Pride Parkway. Taylor Creek and Old Taylor Mill Road. I just wondered if a roundabout would solve any of the issues for the Taylor Creek people getting out on a Monday morning or, you know? So it, it's preliminary, it's high in the sky, I don't know. It's just something that, hey, are they interested? I mean, they're putting roundabouts everywhere, by the way. The state is. Route 9 in Newport, 536 in Independence, so. And they were supposed to put one in here, in, on Pride Parkway, and they took it out. Instead, we got stoplights. And I just wonder if a roundabout would have been better. Plus, it might cut down on the speeding. And we got people going 60 mile an hour down on Pride Parkway in the morning, and you'd better get out of their way.
I have been starting to get complaints from Taylor Creek about getting out in the mornings and the evenings when the traffic's really bad. And I brought up that you had brought up a roundabout. Everyone that I said that to sounded like that was something they would be interested in.
Well, yeah, and thank you for that.
They can do a petition to the state if they want.
Well, we, let's see what Bob has to say. That's obviously have to be budgeted, which means that we'd have to call back on Senator McDaniel to help us out there. And I don't know how much a roundabout costs, I have no idea. But there's no property acquisitions needed. They already own the property along that corridor there. They already own it. So to me, slowing down traffic is number one, getting out of Taylor Creek is two. And that's, those are the things that we wanted to talk to Bob about.
And you had spoken about one further down toward Scott, too.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's a school situation, and they like the stoplight there, but yeah, we could ask about it.
I mean, it was something you brought up, mentioned that may well start decreasing the speeding.
Right, Lakewood, Old Taylor Mill, absolutely. They already own that property, too. So Lakewood has the same problem that Taylor Creek has.
So you could maybe bring that, both of them, to him.
Yeah, we will. We will. We'll talk about it. So that's, that's the kind of stuff that I think that futuristically, we need to look forward to, and we need to try to see if we can get some interest in doing something like that.
Roundabout is the future. I mean, the more, the more you people drive to them, the better they're going to be negotiating. I mean, we said 536, there's three, there's two and a half out there now, they're finishing up the third one.
Yeah.
And I've been over in KU, they got two of them over there, plus another one in progress, and...
At 1303 or whatever, that's...
Yeah.
Turkeyfoot Road and, yeah.
It's a learning process, though. People don't always defer to the person to their left. You have to, you have to kind of educate people.
It does take time to get used to them. I would agree with that.
Yeah. But when they do get used to them, they'll be very happy with, I mean...
The, the way I looked at that is that Independence continues to grow, and we get more and more traffic coming our way, which means heavy traffic in the morning and, which will make it more difficult for Taylor. I'm thinking of Taylor Creek and those people that use Old Taylor Mill to come out of those subdivisions along Old Taylor Mill. So they always use that road to come out.
Yeah.
So it just, to see what, if I can strike any interest, that's, those were the two major things. But number one, though, was the Vincent Drive overflow. Because everybody, in fact, the last commission, Rose initiated that. She said, well, can, can we do anything? Well, we're going to see if we can do something.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else on that? Okay, so moving along. Fire, Dan.
Okay, for July, we had a total of 80 calls, 63 EMS rescues, and 17 fire. A muterated given, five to Ryland. A muterated received, four from Covington, one from Edgewood, one from Fort Mitchell.
We had 34 hours. They took the transportation hospital. They're still doing fire inspections on the businesses. We've got, let's see, 164 training hours, 92 EMS training hours.
How many you got down there? School started today.
Yeah. Traffic's heavy out there.
Kids sometimes do crazy things, so just be extra cautious. I know, I drive a bus. All right, I'm done.
All right, thanks, Dan. Legal counsel, Josh?
Nothing.
Parks and Recreation, Caroline?
You don't have anything, Jeff? No, nothing for legal?
Nothing.
I'm sorry. Well, a lot of the summer events are over with. We do have a community yard sale Friday and Saturday on the 29th and 30th of August, and our final concert for this year, String Theory, on September 13th. Christie, have, you have some information on the campout and stuff that is planned? Do you want to talk more about that?
Yes. First, for the citywide yard sale, you can get your $2 permit. I will advertise on our website and Facebook if you get your permit by Thursday, August the 28th. That gives you plenty of time. In terms of the family campout, I am asking people to please register for that. It will be Friday, September the 5th, starting at 5:00 p.m., and it will end Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. So there'll be movies and crafts and activities, and I think just a, a nice time for the families just to camp out and hang out in the park in a, in a safe environment. If you have any questions, you can call me or email me.
The only other thing I got is, the park is, most of the equipment has been installed. We do have some new basketball goals and equipment that'll be installed, but Public Works is going to do that for us. It's been kind of busy for them, but you'll see those at the park in the near future. But the park looks a lot better. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Yeah, and I want to comment, I was up there the other day, and the park is so much cleaner and neater. Thanks, Carolina, and the Public Works Department for that.
Public Works. It's Public Works.
Yeah. All right, so, all right, police, Commissioner Crimbor?
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody's got the report from the chief, and he is actually at the Kentucky Police Chief Association meetings, which were held in Ola, Kentucky this year. He's attending that this evening. So we'll turn it over to Jordan, Jordan North.
Hey, Dylan. We had a pretty good month. We are still in the process of training Officer Bailey in his FTO phase. He should be coming to the road with us as a fully functional police officer soon. And we just wrapped up, a week or so ago, our new hire lateral application phase, so we're vetting through the applications and should have people in for interviews soon so we can climb back to full staff.
Is that it?
Yeah.
He just made me jealous of where the chief's at. So, all right, that's all I have, sir.
Okay. So Commissioner Merritt's not here, so I'll, I'll read off the Public Works and then ask for Jerry's comment. But first thing I wanted to update those folks that live on Lakewood Drive, there's a couple road projects that are going to be... Uh, there's a couple of road projects that are gonna be taking place, what, next week?
We're trying to open them up and start replacing concrete next week. I mean, we're set to do that right now.
So we're gonna tear out some concrete and put some new concrete in? There's concrete slipping up there, so.
Get some spot Taylor Street, I'll say we're gonna start, I'll try to do it all at the same time.
That's an in-house job, your guys are doing it, right? Okay.
Lakewood is. Yes, it is.
Lakewood, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so anyway, there, there, you've been mowing, the, according to what the report I have is, you've been, uh, mowing the Rightaway and, and, uh, actually finishing your barn, pole barn. How's that going?
It's all done, but the gutters, I'm waiting for the guy to deliver the gutters, talk to put them up. I mean, everything's down with pole barn. Except for the gutters.
Okay. So, uh, cleaning up trees on Bud Way. And, uh, one thing I wanted to ask you about trees, so going out Taylor Mill Road, there's a bush not too far up the street, it's just kind of hanging over Taylor Mill Road. And I know that's the state, have you been in contact with them about?
Yeah, I have.
Cutting that back, are you here?
I have, yes. Bob is aware.
Okay, all right, good. Anything else that you want to?
No, we're just, uh.
Comment on?
I've done the call before you did, we're ready to, first of the week, start tearing out the old and putting new concrete in on a few spots on Lakewood, like we spoke, and then up on the hill. The basketball, they're supposed to have the last parts coming to me and, or after the concrete and everything. So it's at least a month.
That's okay.
Or maybe more on out for the basketball.
They're still playing there even without the new court stuff.
But there's baskets up, they just.
Yes.
Right, right, right. Thank you.
So when's that gonna happen? I.
On the basketball?
Yeah.
Well, after I finish up the concrete, I'm still waiting for, not, I haven't got all my parts.
Oh, okay.
But just as soon as I clean up the concrete, then I'll go straight to basketball.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all the report that, do you have anything else, Jerry, you want to add? No? So that really concludes our agenda for tonight. If, if anybody has any final comments on the agenda, Caroline, Dan? Okay, so that, we're gonna move to executive session with six-one dash, point eight-one-oh-one B, deliberation for a future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency, but only when publicity would be likely to affect the value of the specific pieces of property be acquired for public use or sold by a public agency. So.
And, and, there's two of them, there's a C.
There's two of them, yeah. You're absolutely right. And then six-one dash eight-one-oh-one C, discussion of proposed litigation against or on behalf of a public agency. So I have a motion to move into, by Commissioner Cronbork, second by Commissioner Murray. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cronbork?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Okay, so we are in, uh, executive session.